Okay.
Welcome, everyone. This is a joint work session of the Pecosin School Board and City Council here to talk tonight first about, you know, basically the interplay between us here at budget season. And then we're going to follow this up with a discussion of the entire city budget. But let's start with the school board budget first. I'll tell everybody and I'll just start the conversation by saying the same thing I said at the mayor's meeting earlier today when I met with Hampton and York County and Williamsburg, I believe we're all there. This is generally the easiest budget season that the city of Pecosin has ever enjoyed. And to a large part, that's because of the work that both of these bodies have done previously. In other words, we're not coming in here with spending in arrears, with bad financial decisions. We're coming in here in a position of financial strength. We're coming in here with the AAA bond rating. We're coming in here with all of the foundations that we have worked on as a team. And much of our budget's success because the, basically the environment that we've been operating in since 2008 has been very challenging, right? Since 2008, we've had a major recession in the schools. You've seen a decline in your number of students, which challenged you programmatically as well as from your funding levels. We've been through all of this together and yet here in 2017, as I'm talking about the next year's budget, I can talk about we've got a very easy budget. That tells me that we've all done our parts. And what I would stress to each and every one of you is that we need to do that same going forward. We still have some challenges to go as a city. As a city, we'll always have challenges. But nothing's more important to us than those, than our schools. I think you can see that in the way that council has funded just about every request you've ever given us. And I owe that in large part to the way that our school superintendent and our city manager, what their relationship is, and the relationship between Steve and myself as far as making sure that the boards know where each other is going. So, you know, I really appreciate what everybody has done here. I don't see a lot of drama at the table. You can see I didn't even bring notes because I know that the budget is that solid. And we're talking about meeting your needs, the increased needs of the schools. We're talking about giving our employees a much-needed raise that they haven't had for several years. And we're talking about doing all this without a tax increase, with just natural growth in the community and some, you know, and expanding our tax base just a little bit. So, that's kind of like my five-minute entry into this. But Randy, how would you like your procedure? Steve, would you like to start off?
Well, I have some comments, but I would love for Dr. Parrish, if it's okay with the city council and the school board members, for her to do about a 10-minute presentation on the budget. And then I'd like to make a couple of comments. And I think the last time we opened it up for anyone else.
Yep.
If we could do that. I'd like to echo how much easier this budget process has been this year. It's always been easy, but it's been wonderful for us. So, thank you, city council and the community for making this so easy.
Yes, thank you. What I'm going to do tonight is an abbreviated version of the presentation I did for the school board. And the version of the presentation that is also available online right now, so for those of you that have listened to that, please bear with me. We did have two main objectives for our budget development. That was to ensure instructional programs remain in place and enhance programs where we can, and provide additional compensation for all employees and sustain the transition to the new teacher pay plan, which thanks to the support of city council, we were able to begin last year. Now, just a reminder, especially if there's anybody new in the community that might be watching, we've had a tough eight years, as the mayor indicated. We've had to make approximately $5 million worth of programmatic and personnel reductions because we had to offset the loss that we've seen in state revenue. We've also seen a great increase in the VRS, or the Virginia Retirement System rates. And we've also obviously had other cost increases since fiscal year 10, which is the year, first year that we really felt the pain of the recession. You, as a city, have provided already, this does not include the request for this year, about $1.4 million in additional funding, but in no way could offset the loss that we felt from the state. We have eliminated 54.5 positions. And yes, as was alluded to, we've seen the decline in enrollment, but we have cut 11 teaching positions beyond that enrollment decline. So, if all things were perfect, we'd actually have 11 more teaching positions in our budget. We did eliminate, unfortunately, instructional programs in two of our toughest budget years because there simply was no other place to go. I'll talk a little bit about the state funding, which those of you that have listened to me for the last eight years know this is quite familiar to you. But a reminder that the state has cut $2.1 million in its share of the standards of quality funding, which represents 20% of our current state funding. For those of you that may not be as aware of it, the standards of quality provide the minimum requirements for us that the state places on us. So, what this means is they've cut the funding that supports the minimum requirements that we must meet as a school division. So, it gives you a sense of how deep and hard those cuts were for us. A good figure here for you to get a sense of what's gone on, since 2009, our state per pupil funding is almost $600 less across the school, across the state. So, if you multiply that $600 times all of our students and all the students in the state, you get very large numbers. Also important to note is that K-12 education's share of the general fund has dropped from 35% to below 30%. What I say to people is we understood that we needed to lose funding from the state during the worst of the recession. Everyone was suffering. But what I struggle with is our piece of the pie of the general fund has gotten smaller. And that shows to me a difference in priorities in Richmond when you see a 5% drop in the share of general fund. All state school construction funds were eliminated. So, this means that any construction or any renovations that are done to schools all fall on the locality to fund. And that's something that's really important for people to remember. Years ago, the lottery was billed as providing extra funding for construction. I'll talk about lottery dollars in a minute, but there's not even that funding now to support us in construction. So, it does fall completely on locality. So, here in our city, it falls on the city of Pecosin to fund any of those kind of projects. Also, just a reminder that in last year's budget, there was a 2% raise provided by the state for this year. We found out in November that the state was not going to cover that raise. We did maintain that raise in our budget by making cuts elsewhere in the budget. So, we've been a little tighter this year as a result of it because we felt it was important that our employees maintain that. Also, a J-LARK report provided some data, and I thought this is just one that's interesting. Virginia ranks 11th in the nation in per capita personal income, but 38th in per pupil spending. So, again, I say it really shows where priorities are right now when we look at decisions that are being made in Richmond that were ranked so high in our per capita personal income, yet well below the 50% mark in how we're actually funding per pupil cost. The local story, as you all well know, is very different from the state's story. From fiscal year 10 to fiscal year 17, you all have provided us with that over 1.4 million. By doing so, you've helped us save teaching positions. You've provided the local match for state-funded raises for SOQs, and also provided some funding over that so we could provide some additional compensation in the last eight and a half years of the budget. And we thank you for that. Enrollment decrease, which the mayor just mentioned earlier, this just shows you where we are from 2006 to 2016. We've decreased by 522 students. This is based on the September 30 count. You see a number in the parentheses. That's our count without preschool because when we receive funding from the state of Virginia, they do not consider our preschool enrollment. So, we lost 31 students from last year to this year. When you look at the September 30 count, we're projecting a loss of another 26 students moving into next year. We hope that doesn't come to fruition. There has been some new building in the city, but we have to be conservative when building the budget because we can't come up short during the course of the school year. Here's what our projected costs were for next year. Health insurance is over $223,000. And note that this is based on an 11% increase. It's a very high increase for us this year. I'll mention something about that a little bit later. I mentioned the VRS rate increase. Despite our conversations with legislators, they've maintained that high VRS rate increase for us moving into next year, that comes at a cost of over $194,000 to us. Tied into that is also the retiree healthcare credit adds another $14,000 in cost to us. And we see our increase in contracts, utilities, and food service typically, as we do in our own homes, we do see cost increases. So, this gets us at almost half a million dollars in cost increases. Here's what we're seeing from the state. First of all, as I mentioned, a decrease of 26 students, so that's a loss of over $116,000. We see a slight change or adjustment in sales tax, so that's just over $16,000, a little additional funding. You see here the increase in retirement funding related to the VRS rate increase. So, as I showed you in the previous slide, the VRS rate increase is costing our school division over $200,000. We're only getting $86,000 from the state to fund that. So, we then have to find the rest of the funds to pay for that big rate increase. We are receiving extra money, and it is a little bit flexible in what we can do with it from the lottery of over $279,000. But this is what I want to point out. This is not from the general fund, which is a stable fund at the state level. This is from the lottery. So, I certainly hope we have a good lottery year next year, and we don't end up hearing from the state that that funding's being reduced as well. So, that's why I want to make sure that people understand when the lottery was first came out, it was meant to be extra money from the state. It is now funding that we're receiving that's supplanting general funds that are going out elsewhere in the state. Here's also what you see in terms of what the state is providing for the 2% raise for SOQ positions. This is what's very important. They're providing a 2% raise for SOQ positions from only February through June of next year, not even half of the year. I think a lot of the press that came out talked about, oh, teacher raises, but people did not know that it was not for the entire year. And I mentioned SOQ funded because know that the state SOQ funding only covers 67% of our employee positions. And here's why. So, according to the SOQs, we could have kindergarten classes up to 30 with one teacher in the classroom. Nobody in their right mind is going to have 30 kindergarteners with one teacher in a classroom. It is just not good for our students. So, that means we have to hire the additional kindergarten teachers to get our class size to where they should be, but all of the funding for those positions then falls to the locality, which obviously means additional funding from you as a city. So, that's why you see the SOQ funding only covering 67% of those positions. And by the way, only 62% of the salaries of those 67 positions. So, much of the compensation for our employees falls to the locality. Compensation, as the mayor mentioned, we are in this budget including a 2% increase. What we've done is our teachers are now on a true step plan. So, each of our teachers will move up a step. If their movement up a step doesn't turn out to be a 2% increase, we're adding additional funding into that plan so all of our teachers at a minimum have a 2% increase. So, the average is actually a 2.09 increase for our teachers. All other employees are getting a flat 2% compensation increase. So, this is good because it does mean we're transitioning to year two of our plan. We are seeing in addition, as part of this budget, of $5 to the daily rate for substitute nurses and teachers. They currently make, I think it's $70 or $75 a day. So, our total compensation increase is $318,911. Remember on the slide before, I said the state was giving us $54,000 for increase in compensation. So, what are we doing to try and get ourselves through the budget shortfall that we have? We are reducing our budget by 1.5 teacher FTEs. We're doing this through attrition. All of our instructional programs are maintained at the same level. That gives us a savings of over $136,000. We do have some folks who are retiring. As a result of those retirements and some attrition, we're going to see a savings of just over $68,000. So, our total personnel savings is $205,492. So, our total cost increases, as I explained to you, are over almost a half a million dollars. The compensation increase is over $318,000. We are getting state funding, a net of $321,000 to go to that. I told you we saved our personnel, $205,000. In my detailed budget presentation, I talked a lot about what we're doing with health insurance to gain us some savings because of the huge increase. So, that does garner us over $89,000. So, that means our total budget shortfall is $195,000. So, as you know, in the city manager's budget, which we do appreciate the fact that he included it in his budget presentation, is the request for $195,000. And again, we're doing this because we continue to be underfunded by the state when it comes to our school budgets. So, I just want to remind everybody that while this is, in some ways, the easiest year we've seen in years in terms of budget, it's still a challenge. We're still having to make reductions within our budget in order to do what we need to do for our teachers and for our students. And this is because the state is still not fully reinvesting in K-12 education. They are not bringing us back to pre-recession funding. And we continue to face unfunded mandates by both the federal and state governments. And I do say, as I added on to my presentation online as well, in the near future, as we start talking about any major middle school capital project, it may be influenced by the fact that we just don't see the state returning back to pre-recession funding because to me, it just doesn't appear that we're the priority that we once were in Richmond. And that is the end of my presentation.
Very good.
Thank you.
In a nutshell, I think she just basically called it out, and I agree with all of your points, by the way. Richmond has not been a player in education. The federal government's certainly not a player in education, yet they want to have all the say in education. So, but anyway, that's why I said the two boards working together. We've been able to manage this, and I'm not saying it's always been perfect, but we've been able to manage it. So, Steve, you said you wanted to follow up.
Absolutely. Dr. Parrish, thank you. And the school board that worked very hard on that budget. We want you to know, city council, how thankful we are, Randy, for the additional funding. And your money is being very well spent. In our strategic plan update and the annual surveys that we do, and our test scores, they continue to be at the highest in the state, among the highest in the state. We're very proud of the step pay plan that we put in place to try to retain these wonderful quality teachers that we have. And speaking of the teachers, the surveys show that their teacher satisfaction in the school system is still very, very high. And so, your investment in those folks is really, really paying off. Parent participation in our school system and parent satisfaction in the school system is still at an extremely high level compared to everybody else. I commend Dr. Parrish and Chief Bowen and some other people. Safety and being very vigilant in our school system and making sure that our kids are safe in an environment where there are concerns in other school systems, that we don't have those issues. It's because of the planning and everything that's going on. So, your money is being very well spent. Our kids are going off to higher education. They're going off to vocational education. They're becoming leaders in our community once they graduate from college or are involved in a job. And they're being leaders in other communities, too. We'd like to bring some of those back. But we want to thank you for what you're doing. And I also want to commend the school board for continuing to lead at a high level to make sure that we're making sure that our kids get the best possible education. So, thank you, guys, and we'd be glad to answer any questions. We didn't give an opportunity for anybody else after Dr. Parrish's budget.
Okay. Why don't we just go around the table and see what kind of comments or exchanges that anybody's concerned about? How about we do that? And we'll start over here. Way to catch it.
Yeah, I wasn't expecting that. I would just like to echo what our chairman, Steve Cass, said. We appreciate everybody's attention to this and your dedication to our schools. And as with, I'm sure with the city budget, it is not usually an easy task. And Dr. Parrish and our finance people in the school board office should be commended for the wonderful job that they do, as I'm sure your finance folks do the same. So, thank you very much. I always enjoy us getting together and wish we could actually do it a little bit more.
We'll get that opportunity.
I hope so.
We still have some challenges. Fred.
I think there'll be a lot of repetition tonight, but just thank you's all I can really say. I've only been in this game two years now with the school board. But both years, I see how pivotal Randy and city council, what you guys are willing to do. I think it went on long before I got around here. So, what you've done is made this happen. We just thank you so much for your help.
Okay, thanks.
I'd like to also echo what Ann and Wayne have said. We're very fortunate that we have a great relationship with city council. It's one of the reasons why I came here. And again, just thank you for everything you do for our schools.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm going to sound just like them. I'm brand-new here, so this has been my first time with this, and it's been a pretty seamless and smooth process. I think Dr. Parrish and her staff have done a great job, and it's just good to see everything click and work so smoothly.
Okay. Carrie?
Yeah, anything I would say would sound so similar. I'm just very thankful for the relationship between the superintendent and the manager particularly, and then us and the school board. And that really helps. And I can tell you that it hadn't always been that way. So, we do appreciate you, school board.
She said enough.
Okay. This, too, is my first budget. So, you know, I've been sitting back trying to learn the best I could. And just two years ago this time, I was a member of our school systems. And, you know, I know what this school board does, and I know what this council does for students. Because like I said not long ago, I was one of them. So, two, I want to thank the school board and Dr. Parrish for all you do, and of course, council. And as long as I've got a seat at the table, the schools will certainly be a priority of this council.
Dave?
Thank you. I have no comment tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Randy, you got anything?
I do. I want to take a page out of the vice mayor's book. I have worked in places where the relationship was not based on mutual respect and trust and shared higher community values, and I'm very thankful for it. And I recognize it is a product of hard work on many, many people, and it really starts in our whole community. Beyond that, I did want to note, one other item that is in the budget superintendent didn't touch on is use of excess fund balance to fund a school bus as well, as we've been doing for the past several years. And that's separate and in addition to the 195. That's all I have.
Yeah, I'd just like to second everything that's been said by everyone so far and that I am very satisfied with the way the school board, the city council, the mayor, and the city manager, and our school superintendent all work together. The only thing negative I will say is that I'm very disappointed in the state of Virginia, okay, in the way they spend their funds. They can much better use their funds by supporting our school system and education. And the legislature and the governor need to look at priorities. Thank you.
Jenna?
I'm new to this process, too, but I just wanted to say thank you to our school board and our teachers and our administrators. We moved here from Northern Virginia, which has some of the best school systems in the country. And I was very careful at looking at schools, and that's the reason we chose Pecosin solely, was so that our kids could go to a good school district. And they did very well and went on to great Virginia colleges and are doing great things now. That's a credit to Pecosin School. So, I'm really glad that our city continues to support our school system because I think it's really important. It's one of the things that makes our city great.
Well, I just want to say that I got a call over the weekend from a very concerned person about teacher salaries. What can we do to increase them and make them more competitive? And I'm glad that the citizens are concerned about it. And I hope that our economic situation will improve so that we can give you even more next year. And I want Dr. Parrish, at least from my standpoint, and I know it's the rest of the council also, and the school board to know that whatever you need, ask us. And if there's any way we can do it, we will.
Thank you. No comment.
I'll take it back.
I am also very, very new here, but delighted to be on the school board. I put two kids through the school system, and they've gone on to colleges, as Jen was saying. That's why we are here as well. And I'm very proud of the city and how we can all work together to make this happen. Thank you.
Judy?
I know you're surprised, but I've been here many years, and I've seen the councils and the school boards and how they've interacted. And I have to agree with you that the relationship between Dr. Parrish and Randy is the best I've ever seen. And that's why we get things done, and that's why things are funded, and you have easy budgets.
So, anything else that we'd like to talk about before we move on to our city budget? This is your opportunity. All right. Thank you all very much, and thank you for what you do and what you will continue to do as the school year wraps up, move on to another tough year.
Thanks.
Just to hear myself talk. And everybody else had already said everything. I think we just need to burn that dead horse and stay there and never give us that money back and move on. It is a shame. But it is what it is. And let's accept it and move on and quit whining about it. Yep. Because we can do it. That's right.
We have to. We have to.
The hard part's going to come when we have to do something with that little source.
With the school board, appreciate everybody's continued viewership here, watching council. I will tell you that, obviously, the budget that we've got before us is, it always changes. There's always some last-minute modifications. I want to go through that and then have staff basically ask us, or basically brief us on any changes that they've got. Maybe just, Randy, a five-minute wrap-up of the budget as far, you know, from a high level, from your perspective. And then if there's any questions of any of the department heads, they're here hoping to defend their dollars, okay, in case we try to cut them. But I see no conversation coming on that. Like I said, I'm just very impressed with the budget that we've got. So, Randy, how would you like to start? Do you want to start with that five-minute high level?
Sure. Glad to do that. As council will recall from a couple of weeks ago, when we laid out the budget for your consideration, this budget is similar to ones you've seen in the past in that it seeks to conform to the guiding principles and practices this council has established, both prior to my arrival and continued to refine since I've been here. Those sort of foundational principles are you don't use debt to fund ongoing operations. You don't use budgetary gimmicks to get you through an operational problem. We try very hard to meet the tasks that we're faced with head-on, but without, or with a sense of realism that there's only so much we can do in a constrained environment in a small city. So, we do not typically talk about expanding or creating new programs. We're trying, our focus is to really make sure that for the things that we are doing, that we've got the tools, the equipment, the people, the compensation necessary to continue the mission without expanding it. As you'll recall, the budget really was broken into seven strategic areas. I'm trying to do these off the top of my head, Mayor. Two of them are base budget issues relating to the schools and ourselves. And we have, again, gone through our budget and made those adjustments necessary to continue the mission with casting a critical eye on requests and also current funding levels and expenditure levels. Schools do a similar process, and the $195,000 request from the schools is a combination of that process with them and also with our compensation issue. The third is a focus on employee salaries. As you know, one of the things that I hope to be here for someday is a comprehensive view of our pay plan. But as that is not in the cards at the moment, there is, as you requested, a true January trade, a 2% increase for compensation for all employees effective July 1st. We made limited achievement with this recommendation with regard to capital maintenance and capital equipment. We've begun to reinsert some minor, in terms of financial, number of items back into the operational budget, things that should have been there to begin with, like, for example, a police car and some of the maintenance money for routine maintenance. Haven't made as much progress yet, but we're still working towards it on, hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, ongoing dedicated funds for both major equipment replacement by such things like fire trucks and large public works equipment, school buses and things like that, but also major capital maintenance issues, HVAC, system replacement, roof repair, those kinds of things that aren't normally associated with a new project, but really continuing to keep your fiscal plan. but really continuing to keep your fiscal plan running. If you were in the, in the, this building earlier today, you would have noticed it was about less than 60 degrees because the heater's not working. Now, we've got a number of, of space heaters and that was probably pretty hot. It's a consequence of having an old system, but it'll be back up and running tomorrow. Trying to think. Doing the rest of them off the top of my head. One of the things that we had hoped to make some progress on and with this budget we have is a limited number of new staff to support existing programs. As you'll recall, that is, there is a new staff person recommended in fire, which is really turning a, what can be a locally funded position in the, in the advent that we don't get the federal grant to bring our three operational shifts up to 10 positions each. A new police officer position, a person in mosquito and drainage, and a person in public works who is paid for by the, the current rate structure in, in utilities. And beyond that, the only one that I had missed, the only two, was, one was the discussion we had on succession management and how they're in lots of ways, some of which cost money, some of which is required planning and resources of a non-financial nature. We are preparing for a, a significant departure through retirement of, of senior leaders and employees in general. And then the last remaining issue was a discussion of new facilities. And just noting that from our city standpoint, any discussions relating to new city facilities are on hold as the envisioned discussions about school consolidation and the middle school project transpire, hopefully in, in the coming months. And that's where we are. You'll recall there is, are no proposed tax rate increases in the budget. There is a one, what I would consider minor EMS fee increase. But beyond that, we're looking at the same tax rates as we had before. We are looking at a, an increase in the total reassessment, which is an every-other-year process of 2.8%. So that's an average, but over a two-year process, 2.8% on average, and that is included in the budget. What you see before you, as I mentioned when we presented the budget, is that things change. They constantly change in budgeting. Oftentimes, they change financially in our favor, not always. And this is, this is one of those not always. Since we developed the budgets and the under, the underlying estimates, we have revised downward our projection for personal property taxes for next year by a little less than $61,000. The state did come through with some additional funding for constitutional officers, the ones that are in our budget, as you can see there. So we've got about a 52 or so thousand dollar revenue shift against us. And as I told you, when we presented the budget, I would bring a plan to address that. And you'll see it on the rent. We, we're looking at a further reduction in our regional jail cost. We've been refining that as a jail board. It's already going down, going down, going down a little further. My own department with the departure that we had with retirement, that is a savings that we'll see in our budget starting next year. We had a contingency of about $40,000, which obviously you can see it being reduced. And there was, and still is, an amount proposed to go into the OPEB trust that would be in addition to the amount of money that we expect to spend next year. And we need, we have an accrued liability we need to pay towards. We're still doing it in this budget, just doing a little bit less of it to bring it back into budget. So that concludes the, the final thing at the bottom on the right is the current amount of money in the contingency reserve, which is undesignedated. And we use that for all sorts of things throughout the year. But we make careful use of what we have and we try, well, obviously, we don't, don't go beyond that without your consent and approval. But with that, that is, that is the mechanical changes to the budget to bring us up to date. Again, usually we don't see a, a reduction in the revenue estimate, but, but they do happen. And you hear me say that every time we present it. Sometimes it can go the other way. On some level, it's useful every once in a while for that to happen, just as a reminder that it can.
Very good. The other, the other thing, Randy, just to, just to make sure that, you know, we're laying it all out there. There's no increase in, in sewer service fees, any of the little small taxes, cigarette tax, utilities tax, all of those things continue to be self-sufficient and operating within their current structure.
That is correct.
Okay. So there's, there's nothing hidden, is what I'm saying to the citizens. There's nothing out there, oh, well, we're going to increase your sewer fee and your garbage fee. All of those fees are the same. So it's, it's, that's why I say it's one of the easiest budgets that we've had. But it's, it's, it's not without a lot of work. And Randy, we appreciate you and Teresa putting, and her staff, putting all of this down on, on paper and keeping us organized. Now, I understand that council wants to make one minor change to where they want to, on the, some of the capital funds. So I think we'll let you speak to that and then we'll, we'll figure out what to do with it. And I think that's the, if anybody else has any changes they want to make, now's that time, right? Okay?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I've discussed with all members of council and the city manager, the one small change I'd like to make in this budget is taking the $125,000 appropriation for the beach project at Messick Point and moving that money to a payment for the replacement of engine 102. You'll find that $125,000 specified on page 115 and exactly what I'm talking about for the replacement of the fire engine on page 117, right under Public Safety, Fire and Police Projects. And that just adds on to the equipment replacement the city manager just talked about. I'm positive, I'm pretty sure where, most of you know where I stand on this and why I stand on it. But if you do have, I know there were a few questions. So Chief Holloway's here, Deputy Chief Bryant's here, and Lieutenant Breeden are here. And I'm fully confident they can answer any questions you may have about the replacement of engine 102.
Okay, I'm not interested in the, the replacement of engine 102. I'm okay with, you know, and I, I believe personally that moving the thing from a beach will prob, you know, that was just something of a placeholder. I don't have any problem with that. But I'd like to see us use that money somewhere in, at Messick Point. I would like to see us dedicate that money to continued improvement at Messick Point. I, I will tell everybody here that engine 102, I'm sure, is a priority. And I think Randy touched on that as far as, you know, our next goal is to get fire engine replacement into our repetitive budgets, right? Just like years ago, we did every school bus manually. We're getting to the point where we're there. I don't, I would not like to see us involve debt into a partial payment of an engine. Okay? Where we're still going to have to finance the rest of it. So my simple suggestion to council here is that we invest this $120,000 into another project at Messick Point, to be determined. We can take the words out for the beach. But I, I think that this money was always to be invested in something that would favor the citizens and their approaches. There's lots of things to do down there. Doesn't have to be a beach, it can be whatever. But if we don't continue to send the message that we're going to improve down there, we're never going to do anything. So, or if there's another project that y'all would like. But I, I would prefer not to do, make half a payment on a, on a fire engine a year from now and then be constrained to have to replace that next year because we've already dedicated money to it. People are going to make payments out of their taxes on that engine for now a year and we're not going to have use of the engine. So, and then we'll still have to, to borrow again. So, so personally, that's, that's where I stand on this. I would like to see us take the beach out. I'm good with that. But let's invest it in something that we can all come to. We don't have to come to that tonight. So, you know, I'll leave it up to the rest of council. Bud, you got something?
No, I'm open for the discussion on that. Certainly I support the fire department and everything they do, but I understand making half a payment on a fire truck and not be able to afford the rest of it until, unless we're making payments out of the budget. I don't, you know, Thomas called me and talked to me about this project and I, I wasn't sure then whether that was the best place to spend the money. But in looking at it, it looks like it is a good place to spend the money. The city manager and the department heads are closer to where that money needs to be spent than I am. And, and I would, I would defer any suggestion I would make until I talked to the city manager and heard from the inputs from the various department heads to make certain that we use that money as best we can for the citizens of the city.
No, I totally support moving the, it from a beach because I think not many people thought that was a really good idea anyhow. And where it goes, I really don't have a firm opinion on right this minute, but definitely take it away from, quote, beach.
Okay. Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not opposed to the beach, per se, although I do think that there are much better ways that those funds can be invested. I know there is a lot of opposition in the community to the beach, but there's also some support. Therefore, I would like to see at least some part of that $125,000 invested in something that would enhance the community. Although I do believe that a contribution towards a new fire truck would certainly be a, a good use of that money. I just wonder if there is a possibility of putting a portion of that money, maybe even the lion's share of the money towards the fire engine and have money left over for community enhancement projects that would support what we're trying to do with attract people to the community. I did have some questions, just to better educate myself on the situation. How old is engine 102 right now?
Chief, you will come up?
The engine is a 1990 model.
Thank you, Chief. What is the normal lifespan on engines like that?
Custom pumpers like that typically guaranteed parts 30 years.
Yes, sir.
Of course, in, in that one's case, you know, the company went out of business, but, yeah, about 30 years.
You know, what's the cost of a replacement approximately?
Probably in the area of between 280 and 3.
Okay. And is, is there currently an item in the CIP to replace this? I mean, is, is there some?
We do. It is.
2019 budget.
We do.
2019?
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
Okay. Which that would be in next year's budget, because we're looking at, at 18 this year. Right. So that's coming up on the horizon. Is the current plan to finance the entire sum of the replacement cost?
Great question. What's been happening, and you may recall my discussion with regard to capital replacement, is that we have been pushing pretty much all of the major equipment out along with the capital maintenance issues because there wasn't really debt financing available sustained to, to, to resolve it. We've, we've been able to do it a few times with the refinancing, but that's yet to be determined. I think that this replacement is necessary and therefore, we're going to have to find a way, whether we, whether we do a short-term financing, a lease purchase financing, or pay cash for it. It's something that, that we'll have to determine, at least based on the present plan, as part of next year's budget. Having said that, had we had ongoing local support into our CIP, this, 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 along with some other things, would not have continued to been pushed back out.
Can I say something, Mr. James?
Let's go around the table first and then we'll, we'll come back on. Go ahead. What you, what you got?
I'm also wondering. I'm also wondering what would happen to the existing engine 102? Is that something that can be traded in? Is that something can be sold?
It is definitely a possibility to, to use it as a trade-in.
Yes, sir.
Or, you know, you can do with it what you wish, you know? If you have another locale that needs something and they can't afford it.
That's what I was.
We have done that, too, you know? What one depart, one department is finished with, another one may find that be valuable to their operations.
Yes, sir. I know we've done that with police cars and with school buses as well.
We try to do that with our equipment whenever possible, yes.
Let's just say that chances are we'll donate it.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Of course, my next question was going to be, do we have an approximate value of, of that?
Of that piece of equipment? I, I tell you, I would defer to Lieutenant Breeden over there, who is all the time searching for pieces of equipment and probably knows used equipment better than I could give you.
So Lieutenant, do you, are we putting you on the spot or do you want to come up here?
I knew, I knew that you might come up with a question I didn't know, so I brought some area-level experts.
Hey, we, we appreciate that. We always like to hear from Lieutenant Breeden. Hold on, turn that mic on so everybody will be able to hear you.
As that engine stands right now, and it does need a significant amount of work, the overall budget, quite honestly, would, the overall value of that thing would actually be pretty low. And I'm talking somewhere in the neighborhood of probably $10,000 to $15,000 as it sets. As I've researched and I've looked at other apparatus that are comparable online, that's generally a price range that I see that comes up routinely. Anything else following here?
What else you got, Dave?
That it?
Thank you, Lieutenant Breeden. Thank you, Chief Holloway.
Jenna?
I'm, I'm okay taking out the beach portion. I am a little concerned about the fact that we're not putting money regularly into the equipment fund. I mean, it's like having a house and not putting away money for maintenance. And then the next thing you know, you've got a $3,000 or $4,000 roof bill that's got to be done then and you've got to all of a sudden come up with the money. So I, I would like to see it put aside for capital improvements of some kind, but maybe not earmark it for a certain thing and leave it up to the city manager to determine. Because what if we have an HBAC system go out that has to be done?
Fair statement.
If, if we have that money there, we could do that. And I, I did bring up the increase in the cigarette tax at our work session and I know we put that in there as a possibility. And I was just wondering if we could, I guess I'd go along with Dr. Vernoll when it comes to the cigarette tax. If we could increase that and maybe take that money and start putting that money in our, in our CIP fund to start contributing some money to that so that we don't get in an emergency situ, or at least we can start helping with that.
Buddy?
Well, I, I was all for the beach. And of course, that was a good idea before we actually did any investigation. But after talking to people that have put their feet in that muddy bottom down there, I'm not so sure the beach was the best place to spend it. Plus all the oyster grounds that are leased there would be a, a real problem. So I don't have any problem with moving it out of the beach. I've always been a firm believer, believer that if you can make a big down payment on something, you know you've got to buy, you're better off to do it. And if you are lease purchasing something and you've already paid for almost half of it, I don't see increasing that debt to the extent of the full price of that truck. If you ordered that truck tomorrow, how long would it take you to get it?
Probably all, if we ordered it tomorrow, probably maybe seven, eight months.
So it would already be into 2018?
Right.
And that doesn't necessarily mean we would get it in eight months. And do the, these companies that build these things, I know they're not sitting on a shelf and they're not stock items. Do they lease purchase?
There, there, there is financing options available for those types of equipment.
Right. And every contractor I've ever worked for didn't buy outright their equipment and they tried not to borrow the whole amount to do it. It just didn't make good economic sense. And just about every piece of equipment you see on a contract. And just about every piece of equipment you see on a contractor's yard is a lease purchase, which is, which is a smart way to go. I don't have any problem with going ahead and making a down payment on a fire engine. I think it's a, a smart thing to do. As far as another project at Messick Point, we don't even know what it would be, and I agree, we do need to support that, but we've got an item tonight that I think will support it to some extent.
I just think we put the money aside and we handle that decision later. That's why, that's all I'm recommending in the budget, is that we, that we don't rush into a decision, because it sounds like this is something that's come up in the last week and a half, right? And I don't, I don't want to see us rush in and say, okay, well, let's take $120,000.
I'm not, I'm not saying do it tonight, next week, two months from now.
So all I'm saying is, let's do what we can agree, which is take it out of the beach.
I think a fire truck is an excellent thing to put it towards.
I've heard all of that. And so we take it out, we put it over there, and then we look for the whole population of what's in the capital improvements plan, and we, we do that, we can take what Jana's advice is, but again, what I, what I would say to council is, the way we bought fire trucks in the past is, we did it with unappropriated funds and cash. That's the way we bought fire trucks. And I think we need to monitor our unappropriated fund balance and our cash balances, which could end up doing the same thing, because I'm like you, I don't want to make payments on a fire truck now and not getting used of for eight more years, or eight more months, right? But the, but the big thing is, we've got a very positive balance, and I don't want to, a very positive budget, and I don't want to get caught up on this minutia. You know, it's, it's a decision that we can make, and we can make it next month, but I don't think that we need to tie up our budget making a decision about a fire truck tonight, because I would tell you, there's things in the public works budget that we didn't buy, and there's things in the police budget that we didn't buy, and there's things in improvements, power on the pier at Messick Point, all sorts of things that are not in the budget right now. So I'd just say, take that $120,000, take it out of that and say, we're going to do something, and let's add it to our next agenda after the budget is adopted to decide what to do with it. Is that a problem for anybody?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, one second. The reason I made this suggestion is because whether we pay for it, if we agreed in this budget to spend the $125,000 on it and finance the rest of the cost of the engine, or we spend cash on it when this engine finally can't move out of an engine bay, we're going to be waiting eight, 10, 12 months for that fire engine to get here. So I would much rather, while we have money, because if you look, the cost rate is $280,000. Like Mr. Buddy said, the 125 is almost half of that, and even if it's the 300, like Chief said, that's a pretty big chunk of that money. The replacement of medic four, which is $210,000, the city has never paid for a medic, and the only other thing on there is $50,000 for a public safety building. To my knowledge, this city has not spent one dime on a new truck for this fire department since 2005, and there's not a greater responsibility of this council than public safety. And in conversations with the city manager and department heads, I think, I think it's a wise choice to move this money to replacing this fire truck. And if Lieutenant Breeden or Chief Holloway want to highlight the, the need for this replacement sooner rather than later, they certainly can, but like the city manager said, every year, we push these projects back, and whenever we decide to spend this money, we're a year out from that truck getting here, and it's, it's not getting in any better shape.
So is that month going to make that bigger difference?
What's that?
I'm asking you to move this decision back a month. Is that going to make a bigger difference?
Until after-
Right after we adopt the budget. Is that going to make that bigger difference?
The only difference I can see that'll be made is there's some disagreement where the money will be, so if we're going to have this conversation again in a month, that's fine, but I know my stance will be the same, and my goal tonight was a consensus council for the idea that, that I suggested, so that, that's what I'm looking for, and whether it's tonight or in a month, that's, that's where I'm going to stay on it.
Okay. Like I said, here's, here's, again, my concern, and we have gotten progressively better, and I see Randy putting, you put a police car in there this year, right, for, in, in the operating budget?
Operating budget, yes, sir.
And I, and I've seen us make a turn here, 2008, when we were in, 2005, when we bought those two trucks. It wasn't one truck in 2005, it was two, okay? So we bought two trucks in 2005, we paid cash for them, all right, basically. And though they, though the fire department hasn't gotten a new engine, they have gotten new equipment, okay? Very, very diligently needed, but new equipment. And I have a whole city, we have a whole city to look out, including failed air conditioning units, failed roofs, and all of those things. And what I would like to see us get to, and Randy's trying to progress us to that point, is not to put out a, a bad par-, bad comparison, but not put out a fire in our budget today, right? And instead, try to come up with a way to fund our capital improvements project longer term. So in 2019, it may be that we're looking at increasing the cigarette tax, that we're in, that we're looking at natural growth and how we have portioned that to our capital improvements plan. We're not there quite yet, and I don't want to take a, a detour for, you know, something that's, that's just come up. I, I would tell you, we can afford the fire truck. If, if that's what the majority of council wants to go and do tonight, I'm not going to get in your way, but I would tell you to take the longer view. The longer view is 2019, 2020, new school on top of it, okay? We're going to be talking about these things as early as this summer, and it's going to be a hard capital improvements discussion as we approach the new schools that we've all talked about. So we may be talking, I would like to see Randy wrap up our repetitive things. He's got a school bus in there this year, he's got a police car. Buddy and I have been here 20-some years, we've never had those in our budget before. So we've made a turn, and I would like to keep on that turn and not derail it by doing something different and say, well, that's a one-off. So let's just put some more due diligence on it and not, let's not make this decision until we know what are all the options of the use of $120,000. It may be just set it aside for building maintenance. It may be fire, buy the fire truck. It may be buy a, a new public works asset. It may be anything, but I don't think that we've, we've done the due diligence with all of it to, to say that's definitely what it's going to be tonight, so.
Whatever we decide, I agree with paying cash for it and just getting it out of the way.
You agree. All right. So I think, Randy, what I'm hearing is a consensus to just move it?
One month.
One month.
Okay.
And one, bring it to us a month after we adopt the budget, okay? I think we'll be reducing our meetings, so that probably will work anyway, because as we get into June, we'll probably go to one meeting a month, and maybe we can hear it then.
Okay.
And certainly have your staff do the due diligence of going through all of their, their needs, and y'all pick one and recommend it to us.
Okay.
All right?
Oh, I, I just still feel strongly about increasing the cigarette tax, since we did talk about it at the work session and we did put it in the public hearing notice, because, you know, I think that's another dollar amount that we could put in there to set aside to make a deci-, we don't have to make the decision on what that money goes to, but we would have it to spend on something. So I don't know how everybody else feels about that. We did talk about it at the work session, and nobody brought an objection to it, and...
Well, I think we'll, we'll leave that for the night of, of, of moving the budget forward. Y'all can all think about it. I don't like to budget something that I don't have a use for.
Well, and then to-
Well, it would be equipment. It would be for some-
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Equipment replacement in the CIP, it wouldn't just be undecided.
It was an interesting conversation, I just had this conversation with York County today.
Yeah.
About use of, they're trying to get state appropriation or state ability to tax cigarettes. They're not there yet. I think when they get there, I think would be the ideal time for us to look at that again.
Yeah, because I think what we're going to gain in the increase of 10 cents a nickel or whatever it is, it's, we're going to lose in the volume of sales. We've said that all-
Williamsburg and James City County, who happened to be at my table today, said the same thing. I guess Williamsburg did similar, and James City County took their sales, so.
So we don't think it would, I thought we-
I, I think when the counties get the ability to tax cigarettes, they do not have that ability today by state law. When they do, and they start taxing them like we do, then I think we can look at our rate structure. Until then, I think we put our businesses at a disadvantage for what is a legal product, whether you like cigarettes or don't like cigarettes, it is a legal product, and we're taxing it differently than the counties are. And until we get that equal, I think we're just hurting our own businesses.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could I just add a, a note, perhaps unwelcome at this point, but in 20 years in Virginia, some of which was doing legislative work, equal taxation authority between counties and cities has been a consistent drive by cities for more than two decades. I doubt seriously that we'll ever see it, because it requires permissive authority by the general assembly, and they haven't seemed inclined to, to want to do that.
I just want York County to have, play it out. I guess it's on their legislative agenda, so we'll see what they do.
Just one other real quick general comment, just mostly for the general public, and I think all of us have kind of alluded to it, but I wanted to, to bring it out. We're going to spend more money this year on stuff that we have deferred for years, and the assessments went up, the tax rate didn't, we've said that already, but people are going to end up paying a little bit more generally, but because of that, we're going to be able to fix and take care of some of this stuff that we've let go, including buildings, vehicles, and all those things. So we have not done any of that stuff in the past, pretty much, and we're going to try to kind of get it caught back up this year. And just wanted everybody to understand that we are saying no, no rate increase, et cetera. People are going to pay a little more, we know that, and we're going to spend a little more, but we're going to spend it very, very wisely and take care of stuff.
Fair statement. Some people are going to pay more, some people are going to pay less, right? Because some areas of the city did not fare well in the assessment. And I, I would tell you that, that you should be fortunate if you're going to pay more because your house is increasing, and, which is your number one investment. So there's a downside to saving taxes. It also means that you're probably having a harder time selling your home, right? So I, I never take that for granted, and it's a good point, Carrie, that a reassessment, it's that we're not adjusting the rate, which I've always said our focus is controlling spending, not worried about the rates so much. And that's why, I think one of the big reasons we're here today is we didn't do that in 2000 and, on the, on the bubble of 2006 and 2007, when we had the opportunity to keep our rate where it was and bring in extra cash, when we controlled our spending instead is the key to why we're in such good budget shape today. Because had we not controlled spending in that year, we would have had to take millions of dollars out of our budget, instead of just the, you know, hundreds of thousands that we've had to do. So I would, I would tell you, that's always the right place to watch, is what are you spending, not what is your rate and all that.
One last comment, Jean, if I may. I want to make clear that it is not an intention not to buy that fire truck, just as we planned to buy that fire truck, right? And then moving the money out of where it's appropriated now to be used for CIP or something that is, is an appropriate decision to make, hopefully, we won't have any unusual expenditures that would require us to use that money, but it would be terrible to have that money locked up.
Not going to be locked up.
Okay.
As I said, I, I think staff-
Randy and staff do a really good job by moving the money around, okay? If we have that money at excess, at, at, at the end of the time, still put that money on the fire truck, okay? Because we're going to replace that fire truck at the right time in any case.
I, I don't doubt that we're going to replace, as we always have, replace fire trucks when they need to be replaced.
Chief says we need it, we'll do it.
Okay. Anything else? All right, let's move on to regular session.